Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, November 16th, 2021. In addition to this meeting being held at Newark City Hall, this meeting will also be conducted by teleconference and electronic means consistent with State of California Executive Order N-29-20 and N-8-21 regarding the COVID-19 pandemic. Planning Commission and staff are participating at City Hall and from remote locations. Members of the public may attend the meeting in person, virtually via Zoom, or view it via YouTube. Pursuant to Alameda County Health Order Number 2103, all individuals attending the meeting in person are required to wear a face covering at all times. Public comments may be submitted via email to planning@newark.org. Please include the item number in the subject line and the phrase "For the Record" if you want the email read aloud at the meeting. Emails must be received prior to the closure of public comment for each item. For those participating via Zoom, when we get to the item that you'd like to speak on, please use the Raise Your Hand feature, and the Planning Commission Secretary will turn on your microphone to speak at the appropriate time. Comments shall not exceed five minutes per speaker, including email comments that are read aloud, and must be consistent with current speaker rules and all applicable laws. Email comments that cannot be completed within five minutes will be read up until the five-minute mark, and the remainder of the email will be submitted for the official record. The Planning Commission Secretary will call the roll for all votes tonight. Mr. Turner, will you please call roll for tonight's attendance?
Certainly. Commissioner Becker.
Present.
Commissioner Fitz.
Present.
Commissioner Otterstetter.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Bridges.
Here.
And Chairperson Aguilar.
Here.
All present. Thank you.
Let the record reflect, we are all present here in person at the New York City Hall. It's exciting. Item B, Minutes. Item B1, Approval of Minutes of the Regular Planning Commission Meeting of September 28, 2021.
I move to approve.
I second it.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Becker, a second from Commissioner Bridges. Mr. Turner, can you please call roll? Commissioner Becker?
Aye.
I'm gonna repeat that one time. Commissioner Becker?
Aye.
Commissioner Fitz?
Aye.
Commissioner Otterstetter?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Bridges?
Aye.
And Chair Aguilar?
Aye.
Let the record reflect, five yeses. Item C, Written Communications.
There are no written communications this evening.
Okay. Item D, Oral Communications. Anyone wishing to address the Commission on any planning item not on the agenda. Do we have anyone tuned in via Zoom?
No requests via Zoom. I'm going to check the email. And no written communications via email. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Item E, Public Hearings. Item E1, Hearing to Consider U-21-6, A Conditional Use Permit to Allow Outdoor Storage at an Existing Warehouse Facility at 6691 Clark Avenue, APN 092-0065-005-00. The subject site owned LI Limited and has a general plan land use designation of limited industrial, from Deputy Community Development Director Terriano.
March us one moment. I think you'll need to show your screen. Okay. If you just give me one moment while I get this PowerPoint going. Okay, we should be on share screen now. Okay. Can everybody see the presentation on their screens?
Okay. So we can.
Okay. As stated, we're here to have a presentation on CUP is U-21-6. We'll go over the project location, the zoning map, applicant requests, site plan, the CUP findings, SEQA, and the staff recommendation. The project, as stated, is located at 6691 Clark Avenue. As you can see, it's adjacent to the post office. On the other side of that, you have the Harvest Meat Company, the railroad, and the creek, Plumber Creek on one side, on the rear. And in front of it, you have, as shown on the screen, it's a green space, but it's actually the extra space storage. This Google image doesn't show that just yet, but it's a very large 150,000 square foot building out there for personal storage. And then you also have, just below that, the Mathis Gas Company. Regards to Site Context and Zoning, you see the property is surrounded by limited industrial uses or zoning. The applicant is Whitecap LLC. Their request is for outdoor storage. The zoning is limited industrial, and we're looking at an existing warehouse building that's going to be used. Per the zoning code, limited industrial zoning requires a conditional use permit for outdoor storage. Again, the CUP is for the outdoor storage, not necessarily the warehouse. The warehouse is existing. It does not have a CUP, but it's grandfathered in, because per today's code, it would have required a conditional use permit. So here's the site plan of the property. As you can see from the conceptual plan, as far as the interior of the building, there's going to be some office use, some customer surface sales area, and then inventory area, which is the largest part of the interior. There's not going to be any major renovations to the exterior of the building. There's only going to be some, basically, restriping of areas on the exterior, on the grounds. They're going to have storage on the rear and on the side of the property. This is for their construction materials business. They are going to restripe the parking areas. They will be meeting the code. They're required to have at least 20 spaces, and they'll exceed that amount. In addition, they'll also be removing the fence. There's a chain link fence towards the Clark Avenue, and it has barbed wire and such. Per today's code, at least for the 2018 code that was approved, that's no longer allowed unless special permission is granted by the Planning Commission. They are agreed to remove that chain link fence and the barbed wire, and they will be replacing that with a wrought, a metal wrought iron fence. So as I stated, it's a construction materials business. They're going to use the areas for storage, such as for fencing, roofing, rebar materials. Staff has reviewed the application and found that it meets the findings, and we would recommend approval for it. Per SEQA, it's an existing facility, therefore it's categorically exempt, because there's public services available and facilities, and that it's not in an environmentally sensitive area. And with that, staff recommends approval. There's a draft resolution and findings attached to the report, and with that, we'll answer any questions. The applicant is, or representative for the company is online, gentlemen by Robert Lee, and he may have a few words about his company. Okay?
Hi, sorry. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
I appreciate the time that you guys are taking to look at this, just to bring a few notable points in regards to our company.
Excuse me, sir. Sorry to cut you. Before you get started, can we please have you say your name and address clearly for the recorder?
Yes, my name is Robert Lee. I'm the Senior Director of Operations for Whitecap. Address, I'm currently in Atlanta, Georgia.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Again, just some notable findings I want to make sure that I bring up to the Planning Commission in regards to Whitecap and the company that we are. As you stated, we are just looking for a CUP for outside storage where we carry small stuff, nothing that would stack above six feet high, but construction materials that's relevant to our business. We're projecting to bring about $30 million annual revenue to the city of Newark and close to 30 additional jobs in warehouse workers, drivers, and also sales associates at the counter area. We currently have existing stores around the market today, closest ones being Dublin, Hayward, San Jose, but all the way through Concord, Fairfield, up into Sacramento where we have five additional branches. And we are in the process of building another facility such as this one over in the Santa Clara area. So, $4 billion annual revenue business, 7,000 associates, 150,000 customers. We pride ourselves and our values to not only our associates, but to our community, and we would like very much if we could get this CUP. We've been wanting to be in Newark for a while now. This site came up and it met our needs perfectly, so hopefully I can answer any questions that would help us move forward in this process.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. I appreciate your time. We appreciate your time. One final question for you, and kind of just customary here, have you read and do you agree to the conditions of approval?
We have read, and we do agree to the conditions of approval.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Mr. and Terriano, do we have any further presentation material, or do we bring it back now to the Commission for comments and questions before opening the public hearing?
That concluded the presentation.
Okay. Bring it back to the Commission for any questions of staff. Commissioner Fitz?
Okay, yes. I just, it looks like a pretty good project. Is this going to be open to the general public? Is it a retail store like a Home Depot? Would you get a lot of traffic from residential customers, not contractors?
Great question. We are specifically targeting the professional contractor. We are a wholesale distribution. We do not get retail traffic, and I want to make sure, we might get somebody that comes in, but we don't have a big storefront, we don't have something that shouts retail. So typically, if a retail customer walks in, it's by accident. But our core customer is the professional contractor, and more so in the industrial side than it is in the residential builder side. So, we will not see any traffic from retail customers. And our traffic typically from our contractors, or as you can imagine, in the morning and at the end of the day, a lot of the revenue that we drive is with our sales force, so we have a lot of deliveries that go out to the actual job site.
Thank you.
You mentioned $30 million in annual revenue to the city. I'm sure you meant $30 million in annual sales. Is that correct, Mr. Lee?
Annual sales for us, yes. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. I was hoping it was $30 million.
That would be good for us, too.
Any other questions?
Mr. Lee, I have a question. After the CUP, if it were to move forward, what does that process look like for you and your company? You know, from, you know, starting tomorrow, what processing do you need to do? How long will it take you to where you're up and running?
So our process is relatively quick on the construction build side. Our timeline is really wrapped around the permitting. So depending upon how long it would take to get through the permitting, and Art's been great working with us, and I'm assuming that we'll answer, we have already answered questions from the police department and the fire marshal. We typically would like to get in within 90 days up and running from the time we sign a lease. So we are, we have not signed a lease on this property yet, just waiting on the decision made here this evening. But once that lease is signed, our expectation is to be in, operating, and selling within 90 days.
Fantastic. Can question the staff, and this is more general. When a conditional use permit is approved, is there an expiration or sunset date on that?
They have to, I'm going to use this term, activate it within two years. But after it's an existing, then no. It's with the property runs of land until it's abandoned. You know, and abandoned means that the business has gone from the property for a period of six months or more.
Got it, six months or more. That was all the questions I had for now.
Yes, I have a question for the staff. There is an existing chain link fence with slats there, and it says in the resolution that there's going to be a wrought iron fence or some other substantial fence. Well, that's still, this way, if I got out and walked the property, you can't see through to see anything at all on site by the warehouse. Now, if you have a wrought iron fence that's got gaps in it, you'd be able to see everything in there. Is there any plan to kind of screen some of that stuff that'd be sitting out, the merchandise that'd be sitting out in the parking lot there around the warehouse, or is that something that's being considered?
No, I think what we're trying to achieve by some of the changes we did to the 2018 zoning code is that we improve the look of industrial properties from the right of way. So, you know, that's why we're not allowing the chain link fence anymore. So the wrought iron fence is meant for it to look better, and we would want it to be see-through. We don't really want it to be blocked or screened unless the storage areas were going to be abutting Clark, then we would, because the code requires, you know, storage areas to be screened if they're visible from the right of way. But as long as they're not, then we would want some type of, you know, a nicer looking fence that you can see through, which is actually better for security reasons, too. So that's what we would expect, something that you can, looks nice and you can see through it.
And the final design would be approved by the Community Development Director to satisfaction?
Yes. The condition is written that the Community Development Director will approve that.
That's fine.
So we'll work with the applicant, and they will maintain also the landscaping and the trees that are there. We'll just have it kind of cleaned up.
Okay, good. Thank you, Commissioner Fitz. There are no more questions or comments. We'll open it up to the public for any questions or comments. Do we have anyone online? No requests to speak. Okay. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back for, back to the Commission for any final comments, questions. And seeing that it is a CUP, we will need a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Becker, a second from Commissioner Bridges. Mr. Turner, can I please request that you call roll for the vote?
Certainly. Commissioner Becker?
Aye.
Commissioner Fitz?
Aye.
Commissioner Otterstetter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Bridges?
Aye.
Chair Aguilar?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, let the record reflect, five ayes and the motion carries. Mr. Lee, congratulations and welcome to Newark.
Thank you so much. We look forward to being there and becoming a community member with you guys. Thank you for the resolution.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Item F, Staff Reports.
No staff reports this evening.
Okay. Item G, Commission Matters. G1, Report on City Council Actions.
Thank you, Chair Aguilar, against Stephen Turner, your Community Development Director. Council has been busy recently, particularly with regard to actions related to the Eden Affordable Housing Project. So they approved that project upon the Planning Commission's recommendation, and a second reading was held as well in, was it, on the 28th of October? And so that will go into effect shortly, and we hope to get that project through building permits and approved as quickly as possible. Council has also been busy with the American Recovery Plan Act funds. So as you may know, the city received almost $12 million in federal fund, Plan Act, and the City Council adopted a spending plan for those funds in a variety of areas. With regards to community development, there are three particular projects that are going forward to council on Thursday night to initially spend some of the ARPA money. One of the projects include an Old Town Business Assistance Program. So we're looking to do small business assistance to Old Town businesses, having them go through or offering them work sessions regarding how to kind of run a small business, how to deal with financing, how to apply for different assistance that is available through state and federal sources.
Fantastic.
And we have a small business consultant that will be running those workshops, as well as some one-on-one advising, and we're hoping to do this in multiple languages so we can reach as many business owners as possible. So the ARPA money will be going towards interpreters, towards the small business consultant, also to kickstart a marketing plan specifically for the old business district as well, trying to do some targeted advertising using the existing e-gift card program that economic development has initiated, and focusing that in particular in the Old Town area, as well as some other services, again, to develop businesses in that area. The second program is an extension, not really an extension, but it plays off of the CARES Act, Newark CARES Act grants that were issued last year. Council will be reviewing a program to spend $1.5 million on small business grants throughout the city, with grants up to $20,000 per small business. So it's a substantial amount of grant funding available. There's some conditions that are tied to that. Again, we want to make sure that grant monies are being spent on businesses that have a good chance of survival, so we're asking the small business owners to go through one-on-one consulting to attend workshops so they can help their business survive. We're also focusing that money on businesses that were forced to close during the pandemic and could not reopen, such as beauty salons and personal services and those types of things. The grant program is open to all Newark businesses, but you might score higher in the grant program if you were one of those affected businesses that were forced to shut down. We're going to be having a small business consultant administer that program, but Council's action to approve that program on Thursday will kind of kick off that grant program assistance. The third program that Council will be reviewing is Affordable Housing Funds, in the amount of $6 million coming from ARPA and the city's Affordable Housing Impact Fee Fund to participate in the Home Key Program. There is a hotel operator that is willing to sell their property in Newark to a partnership of Abode Services and Allied Housing to convert that hotel over into affordable housing. So the state has set aside millions of dollars in Home Key Funds, which is an extension of the Project Room Key during COVID-19. Project Home Key is meant to be a more permanent affordable housing solution for folks who have experienced homelessness and households that are at risk of becoming homeless. So through Project Home Key at the state level, the state is making available a substantial amount of grant funds for cities and their partners to purchase sites like hotels and other types of buildings to convert them into residential units. And so, Abode Services, looking in Fremont, but has done work in Newark, along with Allied Housing, which is their development arm, have been working with a Newark hotel operator to convert one of our hotels over to this affordable housing project. If everything goes successfully, that means that Newark could gain 125 units of affordable housing very quickly. That's the number of units that are in the hotel under consideration. It's an extended stay hotel. It currently has kitchenettes, studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms that could be easily converted over to residential units. And again, if everything is successful, the units could be switched over to residential units within six months. And whereas, the development of affordable housing from the ground up can take years. So this is a really good, interesting opportunity to get affordable housing units very quickly within the city. So Council will be considering that program, authorizing staff to apply for state grant funds, and also using our Affordable Housing Impact Fee Funds and ARPA funds for that purpose. So, all of the council materials are available on the website. You can take a look at those, and certainly if you have questions after reviewing, feel free to reach out to me or participate in the council meeting on Thursday. With that, no other updates, but certainly can take any questions about any of the information that I presented. Yes? Commissioner Fitz?
No. On the conversion from the hotel to the permanent residential, is that something that requires Planning Commission and City Council approval in public hearings?
It does not. Part of the Home Key Grant Program is that if you're using state Home Key Grant Funds, then the actual streamlining, well, the project is essentially streamlining. So there's no environmental review. It's considered to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, and it is also exempt from local land use control. So it assumes that essentially by using the Home Key Grant Funds, that the use, the residential use is a, essentially would be a permitted use within the zone district. Right now, it's a, I think it's a neighborhood commercial zone district where the hotel is located. It's the Town Play Suites, which is the hotel that was built in 2000. It's right on Cedar near Food Max, and it's set up almost perfectly for this type of use. However, it's a commercial zone district, residential typically isn't allowed, but per state statute, that type of, the conversion of that commercial use to residential would be found to be consistent with local land use.
Because we had, one of our hotels was used for that Project Room Key, and that didn't require any public hearings or any council or Planning Commission action at all. Similar situation?
Similar situation, but I think Project Room Key was meant to be just a temporary, short-term solution, and then the hotels could go back to being, you know, regular, you know, short-term stay hotels. So this is a little bit different, where we're actually creating permanent, really converting the building to allow for permanent affordable housing.
Interesting. Thank you.
It is interesting. It's a little different, because I think local jurisdictions would like to have some control, but the purpose really of the grant program is to get affordable housing units online extremely quickly. units online extremely quickly. And there's certainly a need for, for that.
Good. They got a commission matter just in general, something that we talked a little bit about for it. The city council and both the school board and the city council of Newark both start their meetings at 7:00 PM and we start at 7:30. I was just wondering if it might be more convenient if it's acceptable to the other commissioners to maybe start at 7:00 PM so we don't have to be out so late. And we could have, put that on the agenda, make, make a formal motion if that's something that we wanted to discuss, but it's something that has to be put on the agenda.
It's not an issue for staff, so we're perfectly fine at beginning at 7:00 PM. I'll check the bylaws, I doubt it indicates a start time in there. If it doesn't, then I think we could probably just do this as a, as a regular matter of administrative.
Yeah, cause I think the council made the change during the pandemic and it's, it's a little different, people don't have long commutes anymore and so I think that'd be good to get home to the family earlier. That's all I got.
Yeah, I think that's a fantastic idea and whatever the next steps are from a planning commission and staff standpoint, I think that's a fantastic idea.
Very good.
Okay, so now the, the bittersweet part of the meeting. Item G2, acknowledgement of vice chair person, Karen Bridges. Karen, I'm trying to think here, 1993 was the 28 years on the Newark Planning Commission and today is Commissioner Bridges' last meeting here, is one of Newark's finest planning commissioners. It's been, I gotta say, when I started on the planning commission seven years ago, yep, Karen, you've been an excellent mentor to me and I've often looked to you for guidance. And you have a knack for being, saying what's on your mind, but being as warm as possible as you say it. And I don't know anybody else that can pull that off and do it as well as you do. You're so warm to whoever you're talking to, of the topic, and so it's, it's something I admire a lot. And you will be missed here in City Hall.
Actually, I'm really honored to have served here as long as I have with the appointment from Mayor Nagy and the past mayor, Smith. We've moved from approving five houses in a year to significantly improving multiple homes and businesses and, and events over the years. And it's been a pleasure, especially to have senior housing, affordable senior housing and this new project that's coming up on timber with additional senior housing, low income. And having been a member involved with Abode over the years, they're a wonderful organization and they've done a number of other hotels other than one in Newark to help the homeless. So I've been very involved and satisfied with that. I'm confident that our wonderful planning commissioners will be able to get along without me for a while. And I just want to say I appreciate the staff, they've been so wonderful over the years, they've done great things to improve our community and bring wonderful projects to us. So I feel good about the work I've had with the staff and I just want to say happy Thanksgiving and good night, that's it. Thank you for all these years.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes, it's kind of a bittersweet moment to see Karen go. I can remember when, I was on the commission when you came aboard, you were the junior commissioner, but we go back even further than that. We're both charter members of the Newark Toastmasters Club in 1982 and we got to know each other in the community very well. And I know you served quite honorably and distinctively on the Library League, the Optimist Club, and the list goes on and on and on. She is one of the few people, even though there are quite a few in our circle, that have really given their all to the city of Newark. She, it's selfless almost at the time that she puts in doing things for others in the city and that's the backbone, I think, of our community and service on the planning commission has really, it's been good serving with you and I, you will be missed, but you're still gonna be around town, you're not gonna be moving away.
I've got other things I'm still involved in.
Okay.
But I just want to see a, a new leadership of people moving into our community and becoming part of our government here.
You have to find your replacement, you know? You can't go.
I'm leaving that up to our chair because he knows all the young people in town.
That's all I have, Karen, thank you so much for your service.
All of you, I, I love all of you and I, I'm really gonna miss you, but I know I'm gonna see you anyway at other events.
Commissioner Becker? No, I've, I've known Karen since I started at the city of Newark in 91, so I had the pleasure of working with Karen both as a city manager and now the last couple of years on the planning commission. I just want to say thank you, thanks for your service. Bill mentioned your involvement in all the other organizations and I know you'll continue with, with those as well and you just won't be here for the planning commission, but anyway, thank you very much for your service, Karen, it really is appreciated.
Thank you very much, thank everybody. Like I said, you're gonna make me cry.
Commissioner Otterstetter?
Yeah, and I'd like to echo what everybody else is saying, Karen, thank you for your dedication to the city, all that you've done. I think I probably first met you during Toastmasters as well, way back when, probably in the late 80s. So thank you very much and I'm gonna miss having you as, as a partner here on the planning commission.
Thank you. Actually, I was in Toastmasters, I guess I was only their only distinguished toastmaster in all these years that they've had.
That's correct, the highest award they have in Toastmasters.
Yeah, yeah. You'd think I could speak better, okay.
Well, you have to, you have to be, keep at it.
That's right, keep practicing, okay.
And Vice Chair Bridges, just on behalf of staff, we want to express our appreciation for your years of service, you know, approaching 30 years as a member of the, as the planning commission. That is extremely rare and, you know, it's, in, in most other cities, you know, a planning commissioner has a definite shelf life and it's much shorter than, than the time that you have served.
Fremont, quite, quite a bit shorter.
You contribute to the overall stability of the city, stable leadership that our community can count on and has counted on for, for many, many years. I know they're gonna miss you on the planning commission as well, but really hope to see you around town, serving in other capacities, which I know that, that you will. So, staff and the commission are looking forward to perhaps celebrating you again at a separate event. We'll send out some details to the rest of the commission to organize that and celebrate you perhaps a little bit more properly and informally.
Thank you.
And I think we'll be sharing some stories probably at that event too. We might not be able to share here and, so thank you again, we really appreciate you.
Okay, with that, we will close tonight's hearing. Jordan.